If buttons, you will not find a harder working child anywhere. I also want to thank my number one canvassing partner, my son Devon, who knocked doors with me not just for my campaign, but for all the campaigns for school board and after we won for other campaigns. He's all, he's gung ho, he's ready to go. He cares, he cares about his community, his state, his country, and he's happy to start working toward that now at 12 years old, and I couldn't be more proud of him. And my daughter Charlotte, who helped me wave signs and helped canvas, and she at the time was only eight years old, and also has medical issues that made it hard for her, and she still persevered. One day, one day she walked with us for four hours knocking doors. So I'm very, very proud of you, Charlotte. And most especially my husband Alex, who supports me no matter what. I could not have run for school board, and I could not be a school board member without his support. I'm going to be entering this board as the only member with school age children still at home, and as most of you probably know, kids are a lot of work. And being on the school board is a lot of work, and without an incredible partner, there is no way I would be able to do both. So, thank you, Alex, and thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. If we could go ahead and have our board members come to the dais, please. There's a lot said and a lot of wisdom shared, so we thank everyone for the wisdom that There's a lot said and a lot of wisdom shared, so we thank everyone for the wisdom that you did share with us, all of our board members, and certainly we celebrate our children in you did share with us, all of our board members, and certainly we celebrate our children in the audience. the audience. It's refreshing to see our kids here with us, from the littlest ones to some of our It's refreshing to see our kids here with us, from the littlest ones to some of our This meeting is called to order. larger students, so we're just thankful you're here. larger students, so we're just thankful you're here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to the November 22nd, 2022 annual organization meeting of the School Board We'd like to thank our team, most of our teams here with us, for organizing the swearing We'd like to thank our team, most of our teams here with us, for organizing the swearing of Alachua County, Florida. Will everyone please join us in reviewing the agenda? in ceremony this morning, and in ceremony this morning, and First item of business on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
and we definitely like to recognize our district staff that helped out with this and our custodial and we definitely like to recognize our district staff that helped out with this and our custodial Moved by Dr. McNeely and seconded by Mrs. Surtin. staff that worked oh so hard to help get everything prepared for us, so we say thank staff that worked oh so hard to help get everything prepared for us, so we say thank Those in favor, say aye. you to them. you to them.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes 5-0. Our next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the school board. We, as a team here at the school district, want to congratulate and welcome our new We, as a team here at the school district, want to congratulate and welcome our new We'll begin with the election of chairman. school board members, each and every one of you. school board members, each and every one of you. The floor is now open for nominations for chairman. I know you may be new, you may be not so new, we've all been supporting children in I know you may be new, you may be not so new, we've all been supporting children in Dr. McNeely, I see that your light is on.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent.
one capacity or another, so we just welcome you, not necessarily as new, but new to this one capacity or another, so we just welcome you, not necessarily as new, but new to this
I would, at this point, like to nominate our vice chair, Tina Surtin, for chairmanship
position and new to this work in some instances and in many. position and new to this work in some instances and in many. It's not new work for us, so, but what it is, is servant leadership is what I heard, It's not new work for us, so, but what it is, is servant leadership is what I heard,
for the Alachua County School Board.
Is there a motion? and we have a board that is all about servant leadership and serving others, so for that and we have a board that is all about servant leadership and serving others, so for that There is a motion, and there's a second by Ms. McGraw. I'm forever grateful. I'm forever grateful. We look forward to working with the school board as we continue to focus on the safety, We look forward to working with the school board as we continue to focus on the safety, So it's been moved by Dr. McNeely and seconded by Board Member McGraw for Mrs. Tina Surtin the educational needs, and well-being of every student in our school district every the educational needs, and well-being of every student in our school district every to be chairman of the School Board of Alachua County. day. day. And you've heard that before, you know, it's every student, every day, and we can do better, And you've heard that before, you know, it's every student, every day, and we can do better, Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, if there are no further nominations, the floor is closed at this time. and we will do better, but our focus needs to be, as it was so eloquently said, on every and we will do better, but our focus needs to be, as it was so eloquently said, on every child, every day, and giving everyone that high-quality experience. child, every day, and giving everyone that high-quality experience. Those in favor of Mrs. Tina Surtin as chairman, say aye. So, it's a heavy lift, but it's something that we can do, and we know that we can do So, it's a heavy lift, but it's something that we can do, and we know that we can do
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. it. it. So we're, we're more than excited to be working with our school board, our newly-formed school So we're, we're more than excited to be working with our school board, our newly-formed school Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. board, if you will. board, if you will. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. So without further ado, we appreciate your patience as we got started this morning, thank So without further ado, we appreciate your patience as we got started this morning, thank And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. you for coming out. you for coming out. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. Thank you to each and every one of you in your respective places, and I see so many Thank you to each and every one of you in your respective places, and I see so many I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. people that I know that I'd like to shake your hand, give you a hug, and wish you a people that I know that I'd like to shake your hand, give you a hug, and wish you a I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. happy Thanksgiving, but from, from here, I'll just say, you know, certainly we wish happy Thanksgiving, but from, from here, I'll just say, you know, certainly we wish Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. you all a happy Thanksgiving. you all a happy Thanksgiving. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Remember what I reminded you to do, I'm sure you'll do it, but just find that moment of Remember what I reminded you to do, I'm sure you'll do it, but just find that moment of Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. peace. peace. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. You may have to walk outside of your home or the home you're visiting. You may have to walk outside of your home or the home you're visiting. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. You may have to lock yourself somewhere in the house if it's raining, but do take that You may have to lock yourself somewhere in the house if it's raining, but do take that Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. moment and just reflect, because we have so much to be grateful for, and we definitely moment and just reflect, because we have so much to be grateful for, and we definitely Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. want unity in our community, we want us all to come together, and so as you're thinking want unity in our community, we want us all to come together, and so as you're thinking Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. about that this year, I heard it said too, you know, we're focused on the same outcome, about that this year, I heard it said too, you know, we're focused on the same outcome, Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. so it really doesn't matter all those other things, what matters is our children. so it really doesn't matter all those other things, what matters is our children. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Let's not let each other get in the way of serving our children. Let's not let each other get in the way of serving our children. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. So with that said, have a Thanksgiving full of gratitude, enjoy yourself. So with that said, have a Thanksgiving full of gratitude, enjoy yourself. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. If you want to stick around, we're going to have a business meeting here in a little If you want to stick around, we're going to have a business meeting here in a little Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. bit, reorganization meeting, and we're going to do a couple things of business before bit, reorganization meeting, and we're going to do a couple things of business before Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. we break for the holiday. we break for the holiday. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. So again, thank you, God bless you all, have a great day. So again, thank you, God bless you all, have a great day. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you. Again, for the record, the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Madam Chair, Surtin, for being elected. Thank you. And also, I would like to thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to serving you.
If we could go ahead and have our board members come to the dais, please. This meeting is called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two annual organization meeting of the School Board of Alachua County, Florida. Will everyone please join us in reviewing the agenda? First item of business on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Moved by Dr. McNeely and seconded by Mrs. Certain. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes five-zero. Our next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the school board. We'll begin with the election of chairman. The floor is now open for nominations for chairman. Dr. McNeely, I see that your light is on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent. I would, at this point, like to nominate our vice chair, Tina Certain, for chairmanship for the Alachua County School Board.
Is there a motion? There is a motion and there's a second by Ms. McGraw. So it's been moved by Dr. McNeely and seconded by Board Member McGraw for Mrs. Tina Certain to be chairman of the School Board of Alachua County. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, if there are no further nominations, the floor is closed at this time. Those in favor of Mrs. Tina Certain as chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Carries five-zero. And Mrs. Tina Certain is elected as chairman of the school board. Again, for the record, the motion passes five-zero. Congratulations to Madam Chair Certain for being elected as the new, I will say, chairwoman of the school board. So you all gave her the applause, but I just wanted to get acclimated to Madam Chair. So, next on the agenda, election of vice chairwoman, if you will. The floor is now open for nominations for vice chairman. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Superintendent, I nominate Dr. McNeely for vice chair.
It's been moved by Madam Chair Certain. Do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Madam Chair Certain, seconded by Dr. Rockwell, to nominate Dr. Leonetta McNeely as vice chairman of the School Board of Alachua County. Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, the floor is closed. Those in favor of Dr. Leonetta McNeely as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. And Dr. Leonetta McNeely is elected vice chairwoman of the School Board of Alachua County. The motion passes five-zero for the record. So congratulations to Dr. McNeely. We thank you. Next item on the agenda. We need to establish board meeting dates and time. Yes, sir.
And I'd recommend at this time that we pass the gavel to the, our new chairwoman.
I would be happy to. Thank you, sir. That's one of those things, when I was talking about gratitude earlier, I'm grateful for, so thank you, sir.
Can we have a break to change seats and put name tags and everything up? Okay.
We'll leave for five minutes. We'll resume at eleven-twenty-eight.
Okay.
I want to thank my colleagues. Thank Dr. McNeely for the nomination and I, we will resume with our agenda as printed. The next item is establishment of board meetings, dates and times. Mr. Andrew, would you like to take it or you want me to take it?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair Certain. The superintendent recommends that the school board continue to hold its regularly scheduled business meetings at six P.M. on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, with the cancellation of the second meeting in December and the first meetings in January and July.
Motion, please?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I move for that.
So we've had a motion to maintain our business meetings on the first and third Tuesday with the exceptions noted of our cancellation of first meeting in July as well as the first meeting in December. Is there any discussion? So these are our regular meeting notes. I would like to say, as we had the discussion in our board orientation, that there is much work to be done and these will be our standard meeting notices that will go out. But as a board, we kind of know that because of the number of tasks that we have to maintain or address that we'll be meeting at other times outside of this and those meetings will be noticed publicly according to law. So if there's agreement with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes five-zero. The next item on our agenda is part of our reorganization. The board members have various committee assignments. And this list was shared with board members prior to today. And we kind of discussed it some in our last gathering, our orientation of the first half-day orientation that we had. And there were some, we kind of had some discussion about some of the committee chairs kind of swapping and moving between. So right now, I'll open the floor for discussion of any movement or suggestions. Dr. Rockwell.
Thank you, Ms. Certain. I would like to take the Equality Florida Committee because I know that you have many obligations with being president-elect of FSBA. I also wanted to see if there was someone else who would be interested in taking over FSBIT trustee just because of the extra travel involved and the fact that I have school-aged children at home.
Thank you. And Dr. Rockwell, as I said early, I will take the FSBIT trustee position since I'm already traveling to attend those meetings as president-elect. And of that, if there's agreement with our colleagues for that. With, and I agree with, I'm okay with you taking Equality Florida as well. Any others? I think the, we kind of discussed the planning board. Planning board's kind of reassignment. I'm cautiously willing to take the City of Newberry, but they meet on Monday and I think it may conflict with my meeting with the Children's Trust. So we meet the third Monday, usually is our Children's Trust meetings and I think that's the same, the planning board for Newberry meets, it's either the second or the third Monday. But if it doesn't conflict, I'll be willing to take it, but right now, I think it conflicts with that.
Yeah, I'm willing to keep it so that it's not a conflict. I was, I did want to ask if Mrs. McGraw, do you want Career Source? I know that career technical education is a passion.
I do want Career Source, but then is the School Health Advisory Committee? I asked for a follow-up with that, what that consists of. Because I would, I would take Career Source on North Central Florida and if somebody could switch in or swap out and take School Health Advisory Committee.
I'm happy to swap that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Abbott, you have any?
I'm happy with my assignments.
Thank you. Dr. McNeely?
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
So for the staff, I will give you, I've marked this up, I'm not sure if you could follow us, Ms. Green, but under, I'm certain it'd be Equality Florida would now move to Dr. Rockwell. Under Dr. Rockwell, the FSBIT trustee would move to Tina Certain. Career Source of North Central Florida would move to Ms. McGraw. And under Ms. McGraw, the Shack would move to Dr. Rockwell. Can I get a motion for us to adopt these committee assignments for the upcoming year?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Dr. McNeely, second by Dr. Rockwell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment? I didn't ask for that earlier, but we have any public comment on our career assignment, our committee assignments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? All right, the next item on our agenda is board member travel and per, we have to approve trips outside of the county that would cost, the cost would exceed five hundred dollars and that comes, we can thank our legislature for that. That came out of a session, I think, two years ago. And to our agenda packet, there were some upcoming travel that is pretty much recurring travel that's offered by the Florida School Boards Association and that, the association supports elected school board members across the state through training as well as support in managing various situations and advocacy at the state and federal level. And can I get a motion to accept the tentative travel that any board member that would like to attend these would be able to do that, will adopt these all at once? No move, Madam Chair. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded by Dr. Mc, moved by Ms. McGraw, seconded by Dr. McNeely. Is there any board discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know with the upcoming conference, starting on the twenty-eighth of November through, I think it's the second of December, but there is also a national conference. Is that going to be a conflict for us or?
Dr. McNeely, the COSPA?
Yes.
Is the replacement for the National School Boards Association and that conference is in March.
Okay.
And it's included in our packet, the twenty-eighth, March thirtieth through April second, and it's in Tampa. And I've already spoken with Ms. Green and we've gotten our hotels secured for that because they open the room block as well and we'll do the registration pending this right here. But we went ahead and reserved the rooms because we wanted to make sure we could all be on site.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the proposed motion that's on the floor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes five-zero. The next item on our agenda is SI, school representatives. And I'm going to look down to Superintendent Andrew for this. I don't have anything in my packet and unfortunately, I did not call the, call the office yesterday to check on this.
I was gonna say, Madam Chair, this is part of the orientation. You know, we asked to have our SI schools placed on the agenda. Those are the schools that are being monitored by the state. And so we decided as board members that we wanted to be able, we got a map, we know where all of the districts are, our schools are in each district. So we want to give more oversight and guidance. So as board members, instead of all of us showing up at the same schools, we decided that we would ask for this to be a part of the agenda so that we can begin assigning ourselves to those seven SI schools. Those are the schools monitored by the state, Madam Chair.
I do recall that conversation. Thank you, Ms. McGraw. So the schools that are under school improvement, just to, for everyone to know, are Rollins, Metcalf, Toowiliger, Alachua Elementary, Shell Elementary, Lake Forest Elementary and Idewal Elementary. So we have seven SI schools. Idewal is one that I would like to keep because I've done that one. I've done three of them, Williams, Lake Forest and Idewal. But Idewal is the one that I'd like to keep because I spoke with Mr. Kuhn about that one. But I am open to us having a school. And the reason we have to decide which of us will take these because we don't want to have a sunshine violation with two board members in one, one school at the same time discussing something that could potentially be an issue. So I am now, will receive feedback or comments from folks. Dr. McNeely?
I think that I'm going to, it's not gonna be even.
No.
So therefore, I will go on and take Shell Elementary and Lake Forest Elementary.
Okay. Ms. Abbott, do you have?
Yes, I would like Rollins and Metcalf.
And I'll take the remaining. Oh, yeah, you did get, I'm sorry. So let's, can you, Madam Chair, repeat what we have, what we? You can.
You don't have an Alachua, do you? Oh, you do have an Alachua?
I was gonna ask Ms. McGraw if she'd like to take Alachua. You want to take Alachua? So just to recap, Dr. McNeely will have Shell and Lake Forest. Ms. Abbott will have Rollins and Metcalf. Ms. McGraw will have Alachua Elementary. Dr. Rockwell will have Toowiliger and I'll have Idewal. I don't think we need a motion for that. Williams is not under.
No, Williams.
They rolled off.
But, Madam Chair, and I just want to say to the audience, even though it's these seven schools, I don't want you to think that we're not going to be looking at all of the schools. We know at the schools who may not be a F or a D. There have subgroups that are struggling. We're going to make sure we move forward with oversight and guidance for all of our schools. But you know, when you're dealing with the state, we just wanted to make sure, I just wanted you to know for the community. I know how it feels when you're sitting in the audience and you really don't know what we may be talking about. Just trying to share a little education or background information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Could you just explain like how we know when to go? And I know that the state comes in and do you do those visits with them?
I have been and so Ms. Whitley or one of the, Ms. Green will likely email the schedule to everyone. It's already set, it's, you know, tentative schedule is set and the dates will, could change. And normally what a visit entails, we go in and there's normally, we meet with the principal and his or her admin staff and the representative from the Department of Education. Ms. Rolle and Ms. Leidenbach, our two turnaround principals, have been at the meetings that I've attended this year as well as Ms. Jones on occasion. And the meeting will be conducted normally as a review of the status of the school, vacancies, student absences, discipline, things of that nature, and then there's a walkthrough. But, excuse me, Ms. Whitley or Ms. Green, one of them will get us, get you all the schedules for that. They'll email that back out to everyone. So the meetings have already tentatively been set throughout, through the rest of the year, rest of the school year. You can get them on your calendars and they'll let you know if something, if they change. So they can change for various reasons, so. And normally we, the meetings are, it's normally very good. I started doing these meetings, attending the meetings myself pre-COVID, really as a show of teaching, a learning experience for myself, but also as a show of support for the staff there as, to let them know that I was really concerned about what was happening in the school. Not to say everybody else wasn't, but I was really concerned and to let them know that the support, that they would need anything that the DOE said they would, wanted us to do. I wanted DOE to know that as an elected official, I was supporting that work and we were committed to doing that and making that happen. And so they've been, they've been, they've been, for the most part, very good meetings, very edifying. And as I said earlier, I think the urgency and all would have to, that's what I'd like to see, a little bit more urgency. You all would be enlightened when we come, so with that. All right, the next item on our agenda is renewal agreement of professional services, contract of our board attorney, Mr. Delaney. And his, the name of his company is no longer Dell Graham. It is.
Weisserota.
Weis?
Weis, W-E-I.
Weisserota. Healthman, okay. So I, if I am not mistaken, you all received, this is kind of an odd position where the new board comes in and has to, has to vote to on us keeping the professional services of an attorney. You all haven't worked with him the previous year, myself and Dr. McNeely have. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I think you all were sent the evaluations from the prior board?
We've received those.
Yeah, I mean, the new people. I know you and I have, but the new, the new folks, you all received those? No. Okay.
It's okay.
It's okay. So I, my professional, I mean, in my capacity, I would suggest that we maintain the services of Mr. Delaney and his organization. And we can get those evaluations to you all. Ms. Green will get them to you. I see Dr. McNeely's light.
My light was on and.
I am sorry.
That's okay. That's all right, Madam Chair. Chairwoman, I just gotta say, chairwoman now. But I too would say that I think inasmuch that Attorney Delaney has moved us forward, kept us alert, keeps us informed of all of our legislative things, does all of the major workshops at the Florida School Board Association conferences, he needs to be with us now. I expect so much from him and I know he's gonna deliver.
So I will now entertain a motion for us to continue on with the services of Weisserota and Healthman and Co., we'll just say Weisserota, how about that? Okay. And Mr. Delaney, you and I had.
If that's the direction that the board would like to go, would certainly love the opportunity to continue working with you. My approach would be to bring forward a contract in December for the board to have a chance to review and.
Mr. Delaney, could you get that contract to us so that we could read it prior to the meeting and we could compare it to what we have now?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
And honestly, I, in looking at some of the billings recently and the financial condition of our organization, I'm wanting to possibly, I'd like for us to consider having, you have your hourly rate, but us sort of maybe negotiating like a yearly rate or something along that line so that we can kind of contain what our legal expense is for the board. And I don't know how that is done, if that is something that you and I talk about and we add that to the contract before you bring it back. But I think for just, I think that's the way we need to go, we need to explore versus just a straight hourly billing rate for your services.
Sure, and happy to, it sounds like we're looking at a retainer type arrangement and we're familiar with that and can put something together.
So I need a motion for us to move forward with that.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that we retain Attorney Delaney with the firm or the Alachua County School Board members.
Motion by Dr. McNeely, and a second, that we would retain the services of Attorney Delaney with Weisserota's firm and a contract will be negotiated and ratified at a future meeting. We'll say December 6th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers? Thank you. So I think that was.
Just, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right. That was the last item on our agenda for our reorganization meeting. We don't have any space on here on our agenda for public comment, but I, as a citizen, used to, didn't like when they had meetings and didn't have a space for that. So I will now, if there are any, if there's anyone in the public that has, would like to speak now, we will give you that space. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. I don't have any sheets.
We don't have calls today, right?
We don't have calls because we don't have anyone, but that's okay if there's someone in the room. I see one of our citizens approaching the board. Sir, if you would state your name, you'll have three minutes with the board.
Does he have a mic? Does he have a mic? Wait, we need a mic.
We need your mic.
Kaliblaun, I just want to volunteer for something. This weekend, I went to visit the Legacy Museum in Montgomery, Alabama. And whatever can be done to send 29,000 kids to see there, I will volunteer every effort to help with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bar. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else?
Tina Days, and I just appreciate y'all taking the time to even explain what an SI school are because I am sure some parents have no clue that their children are going to SI school, which is sad of itself, but it's a fact. So if y'all would, I think it would be beneficial when y'all go, and even what happens when the Department of Education even take over the school. I don't think even parents understand what could even happen to the school. Most time, the schools have to be closed or renamed or it does, they don't take an affair how that would hurt the school because the state is taking over. I see what has happened when the state has taken over, because I am from Putnam County. They have closed schools. They have combined the middle school into the high school. So now you have sixth graders going into high school, which is probably about, I guess sixth grade will be 11 and 12 with 17, 18, 19-year-old boys. And my sister is a dean at the high school. There are problems because of the state has taken over the system, I mean, over the school. So I don't think people understand what happened when the state take over. They don't care about the kids. They're not even looking at the kids' names. They're looking at that their schools are not performing, that they have to take over because the schools are not performing. And it does not happen in one year. This is consecutive years that the school is underperforming. And now they're, like I said, they've closed neighborhood schools. My sister was transferred from middle school to a high school. They didn't give the teachers a choice. It was given to them. So I would think if y'all go to the SI school, maybe come back if a workshop, include the parents that actually go to the school. But like I said, half of them won't even know what the SI school are and what could happen if the parents are not involved. And it takes for the SI school, not only the teachers, not only the school board, it's the parents also. So if the parents have skin in the game, then I would think there would be more involved and would help y'all. It's gonna have to take the parents to get the kids to do their homework, to get the school to involve. And I have a elementary school in my neighborhood, which is Rollins. And I would be, because that's a neighborhood school, even though my kids have not gone to Rollins, but I'm concerned about that school because it's my neighborhood. So if they could be like a workshop to include the parents to even tell them, do they even know what the SI school are and what could happen if the state takes over the school, then maybe you would have more involvement with the parents and the community because it's not a good thing for schools to be taken over by the state.
Thank you, Ms. Days. Seeing no other public comment, I am going to adjourn this meeting and we will go into our leasing corporation meeting next. All right.
Thank you, Chairwoman Sirdan. I don't have a gavel, but here's my gavel. I'd like to welcome everybody to the annual meeting of the Leasing Corp. This meeting follows the school board reorganization organizational meeting. It really is kind of a little bit of housekeeping. In terms of the agenda, first item is the roll call. Please let the record show that all officers and members of the Leasing Corp are present. Item number two is the proof of notice. Of course, pursuant to Florida statutes, we do properly notice all of our meetings. Item number three is the disposal of the minutes from November 16th, 2021. I trust everyone's had a moment to read those and before the meeting. So at this point, I will entertain an offer or a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Moved by Dr. McNeely, seconded by Chairwoman Sirdan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. The next item of business is the financial report. I did include in the packet a current kind of snapshot of our debt issuances out of the one and a half mil capital millage and also the sales tax, just as a, just a little bit more information. But I am happy to report all of our debt has been served, serviced, and we are in good standing.
Miss Orelli, I have a question for you. On the 1.5 mil scheduled, that column that says dues and fees, it's $50,000 each year, what's that? Because normally interest with the amount would decrease as the debt decreases, but I, so I don't, I take it it's not interest, it's something else, but?
It's dues and fees to organizations that help us service the debt in terms of the bank wire transfers. There's other fees associated with having bonds and those are really the purpose for those fees is for actual servicing of the debt and the folks, the bond council, disclosure council, a lot of the folks that help us stay in compliance with laws and such.
And just, I was gonna say, Madam Chairwoman, so to Mr., so that adds up to about $50,000 per year?
It does. We, you know, for a district our size, I would say we have a pretty relative low debt level at this point. We did retire a couple debt service from the early 2000s, but it does pretty consistently stay around the $50,000. If the board would like, I could provide a little bit more detail on where, what those dues and fees in terms of the vendors and then also the amounts, that would be helpful.
I would request that, Madam Chair. Any other questions? And just if, just for edification, Miss Orelli, would you just give us a short synopsis of the purpose of the leasing corp for our new board members?
Sure, so it's actually kind of an interesting thing that's taken place over the last, I think, 20 or 30 or so years. The Florida laws prohibit school boards or municipalities, county board or county commission, from issuing long-term debt without a official vote via referendum in, within the county or their service area. And unfortunately for a school board, we can't necessarily go to the public every time we want to renovate a school or build a new school like, such as like a Meadowbrook. So there are some legal loopholes that have been kind of created in every district and the state uses the same loophole and it's withstood legal challenge. But essentially, you know, we have a leasing corp and the, we have a ground lease for all of our debt issuances that serves as the collateral for the loan, if you will. And, you know, we have the debt service payments, which are truly in our, for our purposes, lease payments that, so it's not directly debt, it's really a leaseback. And that's kind of like a very high level view of it. There's a lot of legal stuff that we could, we could talk through that would put everyone to sleep, but it is an interesting workaround. And like I said, all, all school board districts that do issue debt, for the most part, use the same COPS lease program. Thank you for asking that question. That's a really good question. Okay, moving on to item number five, the election of the officers. We've handled this a couple different ways in the past. We can have the president, vice president, and secretary nominated individually or as a group. Historically, the president has always been the chairwoman or chairman. The vice president has always been the vice chair, so it would be Dr. McNeely. And the secretary has always been the superintendent. So at this point, I will open up the floor for nominations, whether the board wishes to do them as a group or do them individually. I'll leave that to the board.
I nominate, I motion that we nominate Tina Sirdan as the president, Dr. McNeely as the vice president, and Mr. Shane Andrew as the secretary.
Madam Chair, second motion.
So the motion is on the floor, has been seconded by Ms. McGraw. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries five, zero. Next item is unfinished business. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. I'm not sure if the board is either. New business, we have nothing in the works directly at this point. Obviously, we're building a lot of schools right now and finishing up and starting new ones with Westwood, but at this point, we don't have any new business in the short term. There could be certainly something in the medium term that I'm sure we'll be discussing with the board at some point, but at this point, no new business. And with that said, I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all. That is it for us until, we will see you in Tampa next week. And our first board meeting, regular board meeting will be the first Tuesday in December. Thank you.